Please, go ahead and call to order the Airport Authority for the City of Seminole, Tuesday, June fourteenth. Roll call please, Jay.
Jeff Griffin?
Here.
Bill Watland?
Here.
Tim Poplin?
Here.
Gary Howt?
Here.
John Kramer?
Chris Anson?
Here.
Larry Church?
Here.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Shane Fisher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Gary Howt?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Shane Fisher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under current business, consideration of possible action to approve the purchase of a fifty-four inch Hustler Fast Track SD Lawn Mower at the state contraction bid price not to exceed five thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars, to be funded from the unappropriated special projects funds in the general fund, Fund Ninety-Two.
This is one that burned.
Yes, sir, that's, uh, we had a small accident and the lawnmower caught fire at the airport and we don't have a backup for them, so we're gonna have to go get 'em a new one or experience out of control weeds and et cetera.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Gary Howt?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Shane Fisher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Airport Authority? If not, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Some would.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? If we could please call to order the Seminole Gas Authority. Roll call please, Jay.
John Kramer?
Here.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Here.
Bill Watland?
Here.
Jeff Griffin?
Here.
Gary Howt?
Here.
Larry Church?
Here.
Chris Anson?
Here.
Shane Fisher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Gary Howt?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Shane Fisher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Gas Authority? If not, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Some would.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? If we can now please call to order the Utilities Authority. Roll call please, Jay.
Dee Dee Patterson?
John Kramer?
Chris Anson?
Here.
Bill Watland?
Here.
Jeff Griffin?
Here.
Tim Poplin?
Here.
Gary Howt?
Here.
Larry Church?
Here.
Shane Fisher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Consideration of action and consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Gary Howt?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Shane Fisher?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Some move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? If we could please call to order the City Seminole Council Meeting?
Chris Anson?
Here.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Here.
Gary Howt?
Here.
Larry Church?
Here.
Tim Poplin?
Here.
Bill Watland?
Here.
John Kramer?
Here.
Shane Fisher?
Here.
We have a quorum.
If we could go ahead and please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bill, can you be kind enough to leave us? Yes, I got a missing miss. I hung a good guy. But we could stop getting quit. It meant all moment put the law for Seminole. Moment post Jim all good. You know, could you get this moment Jimmy's second of his say on against gas. Oh, God, whose mercies cannot be numbered except our prayer of thanks for the City of Seminole and all our people. Let us love one another for you, God, our love. Amen.
Amen.
Under elections and appointments, consideration of possible action to approve the following mayoral appointments for renewals for three-year term. I guess we need to do each one individually, correct? Or no?
Uh, Brad has recommended in the past that we do individually.
Alright. Alright. The first one will be for Brian Adams to the Park Board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
You can do that.
Can I do it? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Show that there were none opposed. Dwayne Tiger to the Park Board?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, respond aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Buster Wilcox to the Lake Development Commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, respond aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Danny McSpirit to the Lake Development Commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, respond aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ken Green to the Planning Commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, respond aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Michelle Downey to the Planning Commission?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, respond aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ken Green to the Board of Adjustment?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, respond aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Steve Shopes to the Board of Adjustment?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, respond aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brian Coats to the Airport Advisory Committee?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, respond aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Neil Craig to the Airport Advisory Committee?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, respond aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is it. Under public hearings, we need to open a public hearing for the discussion and consideration of the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen dash seventeen joint budget for the City of Seminole and related funds and authorities. And I believe everyone should have the... Do you want to walk us through this?
I can.
Yes, sir.
I, I think there may be a few here. I see a few that are wanting to talk about the parks. This may take a while if you want to consider going through the, the park discussion first. That might be helpful to some who may want to go home and relax.
With response to the budget, is there anyone that would like to speak on that? Whether it be the parks or whatnot?
I was just wondering, Stuart said he spoke about mowing the grass?
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to make sure, like, is mowing important to mow of it?
Well, what happens is, is it's a discussion that we're just having now as far as, you know, with the shortfall in the budget, where does it fall? And I've spoken to Steve as well, um, just to let everyone else know, is they live by Bryant Park. And one of the people next to Bryant Park has offered to get a coalition together to mow it for the city, so rather than sell it, if at some point the city's able just to start mowing it again, they haven't lost the land, that they will be able to keep it. And so, I don't believe anything's been decided officially yet as far as what happens to the parks, correct?
That's right. This, this is to open the discussion. You can either take action or not take action tonight. The discussion really centers around the fact that we're losing, if my math is right, forty-four thousand plus man-hours when we lose our inmates. That is a tremendous hit, especially where it deals with the mowing. I have had some contact with, uh, people that live near those parks and have expressed interest in mowing them either themselves or contracting to habit mode. Obviously, from a city standpoint, I think that would be our preference, uh, but the fact remains that the city crews, uh, are no longer going to be able to maintain them, certainly not maintain them in the manner of which the neighborhoods have been accustomed to seeing them maintained. So, uh, the thought from the management is that it may be better to either sell those or ask the neighborhood to come together and try to keep those maintained. That's the thought.
And for those of y'all that don't know, what he's talking about on the loss of man-hours is they recently have lost the ability to have work release inmates. And I think we had, what, sixteen roughly?
Yeah, up to, up to twenty at a time.
And so, we no longer have all of the, the labor that they provided. And so, that's why all of a sudden, you now have the inability to maintain mowing all of that. And I'm s- I know who you are, but can you just state your name for the record so everyone knows?
Stacy Dudgeon.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, I'm Sean.
Yes.
I wanted to chase park part. I know it wasn't on the list to be one of the parks, so is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, the other locations for the parks, there were six listed. I'm not familiar with them. Where are those located? And the second question is, who are you going to sell them to? Is it going to be for public, for a neighborhood person? Like, if I wanted to buy Chase, say, it was for sale, would I be able to buy Chase Park? Who's going to buy the parks? Is it someone in that neighborhood? Are you selling it to a, a, a business? Are you selling it to, you know, I don't quite know where they're all located. Some I've never heard of.
And, and that's kind of part of it, is some of the parks are small enough that they're a small park in a neighborhood that may be a small lot, maybe, you know, not even big enough to, to put much on, but yet the city still maintains them. If I'm not mistaken, real estate owned by the city that is sent out has to be for a bid. And so, it would be to the highest bidder.
Well, and we also, we also have to check and make sure that whoever donated the park does not ha- did not have any stipulations on what would be done with it if the city decided not to keep it anymore.
To donate the park?
In other words?
No, if there was a family who donated the land or something like that, there may be a stipulation.
Could it be in a trust or something?
That, that I don't...
No, no, no. What he's saying is, once we obtain the land in the first place, how we got it. On some of the times when we are giving parcels of land, there are stipulations that we can never sell it, or you can only sell it to X, Y, and Z. And so, as long as all of the parks are free and clear, it would technically have to go to the highest bidder.
How many parks do we have in the City of Seminole? That we're talking, I know we're gonna be listed only six that is going to be sold, but how many small parks around the city besides the big park that we definitely would be selling? Um, what's the name of it? The little dairy cottage, the tennis courts?
Municipal.
Municipal park. I know I'm selling that, but we're talking about the little neighborhood parks, but how many parks do we have? So, if we sell these six, do we come back later and sell all more parks? Yep. We have twelve parks.
When I drove around yesterday and looked at a lot of them, then there is like at Guyanese, just one little, like jungle gym thing, ad lonesome type thing. There wasn't a lot of good stuff. I didn't know where no park was, but then when he told me I do remember, it was up there. So, a lot of the parks are as anything, but like the park, mine park, we maintain it besides mowing the grass. When something breaks, we fix it.
Right.
There's not a trash can, we keep the trash picked up. I mean, we watch it. I mean, if there's trouble, we call someone, but there never been trouble. I mean, it's, I don't, it, it is my backyard. There's nothing behind us except that park and woods.
Sure.
And so, I don't want someone else, I mean, to my yard.
In the back, yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Karen Bryant, and I'm trying to get this thing down from my grandpa. And if you guys want to sell that, that's fine. The art of it is, is what you have to help with the mowing. Help with that, um, save yourself viable, if you, you know, it's not going to hurt out. But we would be really happy to help with mowing it. The neighborhood itself decides to come together and you can all, for example, come out and, you know, my grandfather was obviously a Catholic, there's, there's no board and we were actually in college. It is not a visible park, kids don't really play on it. I mean, I paid my nephew and my sister some money, but other than that, I've actually never seen this thing there. But if the neighborhood decides to come together, we'd be more, more, you know, help with something.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
But if kids do play there, I mean, like, it's not packed with kids, but there was three of our kids there yesterday, there was three kids there today. More peo- it's not, it's not known. Most people don't even know it's there, but people in our neighborhood know it is there.
Yes, sir.
My, my son plays there. If you would offer ice cream more often out the back gate, you'd get a better crowd.
I'm Jack, and I'm playing the first in the park before in Seminole. I grew up on his side, and I grew up playing at Admore Park, which there are, there is no playgrounds there. And I would just like to speak briefly on, on this subject. Um, it's been touched on a little bit. There are so many kids that live in these neighborhoods around town, that this is their access to playgrounds with it. And, you know, their families aren't here, and I'd most likely, um, they're not here to speak out against this law, but we know it. But I would just ask on that, on that front, the fact that so many kids are served by these, by these parks, and then also the fact that so many of these parks are named after them, and made this city what it is, and what it is. And in reading this, and I, I have a lot of experience with parents who are very good at mistakes are made, but, but the way it's worded is so indicative of, of some of the failures that we have experienced here. Just by the spelling, Mary Bryant's granddad, it's B R Y, not B R I. And most people don't even know what John's Park is, not J O H, it's J O H, yes. And I perceive R. Johns, he was the last superintendent of the Holy College, the mayor of the school. Admore, Fred, not Fred Admore, was the mayor of this community. He was in the Hall of Fame. He, uh, was a businessman over at Admore Park, he was in downtown Seminole. He was another one of those men. His daughter Liz, is Liz Robertson, the first female citizen of the year for Seminole. Saw the Seminole school work for many years, followed in her father's footsteps. These parks are named after people, but that's, that's arbitrary. That's how those kids that play in these parks, they will have no idea who these people are when we remove these parks. And I'm a big boy now, I know owner play at those parks, I'm a, I'm a grown man now, so I'm not just here trying to appeal to anybody's emotions. I want to offer, I want to help be a part of the solution. I'm, I'm the city judge of Toronto, and we have many descendants who cannot pay a dime. And we had the same problem here in Seminole, Mr. Carter, is he can't pay a dime for his fines. But they're all, so many of them are willing to do community service. And I understand because the Dutchman state that, that, uh, inmates, these programs are available, and that, that's, that I hate that. But communities, the descendants and city workers are willing to do community service to work off their fines. And if, if before y'all look forward to this, Mr. Mayor, if we could talk and, and, and work together to come to a solution and look at other ways to make up the difference. But there are people willing to work, to work off those fines, and this, that, that's, that's a way to make up for it possibly, at least talk about it, before we abolish another, more landmarks in this community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Larry Howes, and I live on the back side of Bryant Park. My father was in the first hall of fame. He was the head of the planning commission as a state representative. He was president of Lions Club. He was in the choir for twenty-five years and did a lot of things for his town. He picked out that law because that's where he wanted to build his dream home for my mother and him. And, uh, it has this beautiful view looking out the back. I think that's probably when they passed the park. But one of the reasons he built there and didn't build out here was because of the view from there. So, if Bryant Park was to be sold and someone developed it and built whatever back behind my house, not only would it maybe devalue the property, but it also blocks the view that, that we've had this beautiful use for years. So, I noticed yesterday that, uh, the city came out and mowed this park. And they've been doing that with two of the large mowers for, I don't know how many years. I don't tell them if they have the prisons, but they mowed it for years without the prison. Well, one man came out yesterday, and Stacy and I timed it, and he mowed the whole park in an hour and fifteen minutes. Now, that isn't how much time it took him to love to mow and drive out there, but that's not a lot of time. And that, that park probably only needs mowing once every two weeks. And, uh, when we have a hot summer, it's probably once a month. So, that's not really a whole lot to take care of back there. And that's something like, I know one time I told Steve one of the lights was burned out back there, and Steve had a fix for it in a day or two, uh, something of that. On Jack's point, I wanted to say that once those parks are sold, there's nothing stopping this thing of the prisons being reversed. Maybe in a month, maybe in a year, maybe in five years, and we've got those prisons back, but we'll never get those parks back. And who profits by that in a dollar amount against a child maybe turning his life around because he got to play in parks? Uh, I looked up the word recreation and, and you take it apart and it says recreate. And that park is someplace where you play, and you recreate your life in certain ways. I, I was raised in the choir park and Chase Park, and I still have memories of those parks, playing in those parks as a child. And that's all worthwhile. I'm not going to tell you how long it was, but it was a long time ago. So, anyway, I just wanted to present that to you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'm sorry, it's Mrs. Shai. Uh, back to Chase Park.
Yes, ma'am.
I've lived there for thirty-six years, next door to Chase Park, and we had the small swimming pools in all the parks. And about ten years ago, they closed all those small community swimming pools, which was a real asset to our, uh, little neighborhood of children that couldn't get to the big pools. At, at that time, my children were growing up, uh, five, six years old, now they're forty-three. I'm not that old, though, in my bathroom, I was about sixteen. But, uh, they, they played in that park and not just, and that's probably one of the larger parks of all the parks we're talking about, Chase Park. I think it's, it's pretty nice size, it's a full square block. But our, our children do need parks to play in. Uh, that was really instrumental in my children's playing, having a basketball court, having the swimming pool, which we've got swings and, and other, uh, activity areas for them. But I, I do believe that our children need a local park, a park that's close to their homes, a park that they can walk to, um, and a park that their parents can also be there to help supervise. And that's one of the purposes of a, a neighborhood park, is for the children in that area that can't get away to go to other places, that can go there for a few hours a day and be home before dark. And, uh, I think they're really necessary for our community, and I'd hate to see them sold.
Would anyone else like to speak? Go ahead, do you want to address the budget?
Yeah, uh, I, I wanted to answer Mrs. Shai's first question, which was, uh, who's to say that we're not going to do more cuts with more parks? We really don't know the full impact yet, so I, I don't think we can go out on a limb and say, this is it. We, we will not do away with any other parks, uh, in our plan. Obviously, the council has all the say-so in what we do. What I can tell you is, it might correct me, I think we've got three hundred and forty acres that we mow. Is that?
That's not just parks, but it's also ten median.
Right. That's everything that we mow. And, and we're trying to do that with seven guys now. It's, it, it...
Four after the...
Yeah, four guys will be in charge of mowing three hundred and forty acres and to the point, it, it takes a lot of time to mobilize, to get to these little, little parks. And that's what we're trying to save, is that, that hour and a half turns in after weeding, that turns into four hours, three and a half hours by the time they've weed eat it and, and loaded and unloaded. So, it, it really comes back to that forty-four thousand man-hours that we're losing. We've got to find a way to get it down where these four guys can handle, uh, with big bat wing mowers. We've, we've done everything we can to try to solve volume mowing, but it's that tedious finish mowing in those parks that really, uh, takes most of the time. And we don't, we want the kids to have parks, that's, we want that desperately, but we don't have a better solution unless we can come up with it. Certainly, putting, uh, community service workers is not a solution. We would be paying more in, in damages to people that have hurt themselves on mowing equipment than...
All carrier will all those.
I'm sorry, our, it's a good idea, it's just our carrier, my understanding is, will not cover an injury, uh, to a community service worker if we put them on one of our pieces of equipment. So, I mean, if that helps, I mean, I, I'm sure there's other solutions if people want to bring their own mowers and do it, but we can't, we cannot put any community service people on any pieces of equipment, it's just...
The local people that we've been mowing, have they put that off? Do they have a liability there, or would they be going on their own, or if they hurt themselves mowing on a sitting park?
It's always, I mean, here I am, I mean, Jack can tell you too, I mean, you can be sued for anything, for any reason nowadays. We, I deal with it every day, but, uh, it just depends. I mean, we'd probably have to figure something out where we did a waiver and, and of liability or something, you know, um...
For mowing purposes.
Yeah, any known hazards, unknown hazards on the, on the premises, that type of thing. So, I can't answer that question, because I don't know, it just depends on if a person, you know, if a person got hurt, or how bad it was, how it happened, there's just so many factors. But, um, Jack's right, we can use, we can use community service people to wash a police car or something that's less, you know, less risky, but we can't put them on a mower.
And to address, somebody had asked earlier, is, and that's what Mrs. Dudgeon and I also spoke with her neighbor, and that's, you know, them, uh, mowing in the short term because you don't know if, what happens with the budget. You know, once you sell the property, it's gone, and that's not the ultimate goal, but the problem does become is how do you shore up the, the shortcomings in the meantime? As a city budget, we're not allowed to operate in the negative. And so you have to do, I mean, it has to balance, period, this year. We can't hold off for a year or two and say, well, we'll get this back in two years, then we'll be able to do that. And so, you know, the problem becomes is when you start looking, you know, something's being cut, what is it? Is it the manpower, you know, to mow a park? Well, if you have a group that comes together that says, we'll mow the park in the interim, hey, that is wonderful. But on some of the parks, you don't. And so that's the tough part, is, is, you know, when you go from seven employees to four and you lose sixteen to twenty inmates that were cutting, mowing, and all of that, that is a huge amount of manpower that you can't replace. And so the problem is, is, you know, that guy that came and mowed for an hour and a half, he, he may be one of the, you know, three of the seven that are cut to get down to four. And so there's not that guy that even has that extra, you know, couple hours to go mow that one. And so, I mean, it, it's not easy, I know that's what we're looking at as far as, you know, where are the areas that we can cut? Because it has to balance at zero. Yes, sir.
It would seem to me that it would be a wise thing, since there are some that are willing to take on that responsibility, determine of the six parks, what citizens groups are willing to take on what parks? And after we've made that determination and given an opportunity for people to volunteer and to do that, if there are parks for which no one is speaking, then we have to look at whether or not to sell it. But I think the first line is to see what can be done with volunteer help to preserve as many of the parks as is possible.
Yes, sir.
You know, we've seen adopt a highways in, in, in the towns and stuff, uh, what about considering adopt a park? And then if people step up out of the six and, and wanna adopt it, then we can check with legal counsel and make an recommendation to, uh, shelve this for in time and see if we can adopt a park or something that feasible to look at.
I like it.
I like it too.
That's a good idea right there. I think that's the compromise that you might be looking for, figure something-
How do we get the word out?
Carol's gonna adopt Chase Parks, she's already standing up.
Then I'm trying to keep our neighbors from beating the slum area, you know, I'm gonna keep that park up. I've been over there picking up trash with my own trash can when there were gangs playing, uh, basketball and guns in the back of their car. Dirty diapers thrown down when people had left and come to play and leave their debris there. So I, I, I've been a warrior in my neighborhood, I continue to be a warrior in my neighborhood. Uh, my question is, how are you gonna come with a value to put this property for sale? Are you going to have this, I mean, how do you come to a value of it? Have you just do an assessment for a bare land next to a housing addition? And you said you'd have bidding, an open, possibly a bidding.
No.
You just sell it to the first person to come to the market?
No.
That was the highest bidder. You set it today in a time of when bids are due.
We would have to take sealed bids. Our, our charter calls for any property value over fifty thousand dollars, which none of these are greater than three acres, so none of them are over fifty thousand dollar value. Uh, we would put it out for sealed bid after the city council has determined that they're surplus property.
What are the other costs on the, on maintaining parks, aside from manpower?
Chemical, uh, a lot of, a lot of times we've got chemical involved, trying to keep it knocked down. Uh, maintenance on the equipment itself, some of these do not have equipment, play equipment, but many of them do. And, uh, we do our best to maintain the, the play equipment.
Does anyone else have any comments regarding the parks? Yes, sir. Twenty years? Since, since nineties? Yeah, since ninety-four, yeah.
We've always had prisoners, pretty much, for a long time. From ninety-four.
I know.
Ninety-four, that's-
But we've had the prison for more than twenty, correct? Twenty-two? And then before that was?
Bo- bullying.
Bully facility? That would be the governor. The governor passed legislation-
Yeah, they, they shut- The, the budget, the, the one point three billion deficit in the state budget, they decided to consolidate all of the work centers to Granite, Oklahoma. So all the inmates that are currently being held at, uh, at our work center will be transferred to Granite. And all the other fifteen centers around the state are also being, uh, transferred to Granite, so they can have fewer personnel issues and et cetera. Every, everything, I, I would say everything's possible, it's not likely.
Yes, ma'am. Well, yes, sir, I mean, part of what we're also looking at is, it's not only just the manpower and all that, but if you also, in the newspaper, they'll pump, uh, they'll print the monthly, uh, sales receipts and the tax income that the city gets, and we're also down there, so not only do we not have the inmates to help mow, but last month, we had a deficit of how much?
Uh, are you talking about sales tax?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, well-
For the year?
We, we made five hundred and thirty-eight dollars extra in sales tax, so we were actually up zero percent, we were break even.
But yet, the cost goes up.
But before that, we've lost two hundred and seventy-eight thousand roughly in sales tax, for the year.
For the year? So we're down two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars towards the budget, and we have the man-hour cuts.
Right, and, but is that something, or is that just something that's come to you?
It's, yes, it's, no, it's, it's a combination of things. Uh, first, I would say it's the economy. Uh, we're always going to be tied, tied to the oil field. And the, the other thing that is happening, and it's kind of the, this generation's issue, is the online sales tax. Uh, when you purchase online, typically, you're not gonna pay sales tax. And I, I think I told someone earlier, by the year twenty thirty, if that continues, the, in, in the incline that it is now, we will be driving on gravel roads. Uh, you cannot maintain a city, uh, water, sewer, uh, and roads without sales tax. Fire, police, you cannot do it. And so, uh, as Amazon and others take off big time, they're not paying sales tax to us. Uh, another one is the, the fact that we got a lot of use tax at one point from AT&T, uh, where people had landlines. Well, the state legislature has not allowed city governments to get usage fees off of these cell phones. So, uh, uh, there's a lot of things being nipped at from the budget that the city depends upon, uh, but the large one is the economy.
Jay, what was the percentage we had to cut from our budget compared to last year? To, to balance the budget?
Officially, we asked everyone to cut five percent, we've actually cut eleven. It's just going into the next year.
And the, the problem, like I said, is it's not a, on some of the things, you can't hold off and say, well, we'll be short this year, but we'll make up. At the end of every year, by state law, we have to be balanced at zero. And we have to plan our budget accordingly on what receipts are. So even if we were gonna be bequeathed a billion dollars next week, we still can't budget off of what will come. It's only what the receipts are and have been, and so moving forward, that's where the budget has to be.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
One thing that I, I didn't realize till I became a council member is how the city is funded. Uh, I wanna say a hundred percent taxes, that's pretty close, but what, what is the actual number?
Well, revenue from water and sewer is some, fines and forfeitures, uh, you know, for various tickets are, are very, very small. But those are the big, big ones.
It's funded primarily by sales tax, and you can see it when they put that in the paper, how the sales tax has gone down. So therefore, the city has less money to work with, and that's kind of where we're at right now. Uh, and a lot of it has contributed to, to the oil in this community. Just not the traffic going through, the people that stop and, at the quick stops and buy gloves and fill up with fuel, and, and this trickles right on down to, to the laps of the city, and, and that's where we're at. It's tough decisions, but, uh, these people's really crunched numbers and spent a lot of hours doing it, and there's stuff that nobody likes, but it, it's fact.
Well, yeah, to, to, to put it into other, another way to look at it, I, I think we would have been able to survive a eleven percent cut, okay. It's the forty-four thousand man-hours, which is effectively about fifty percent of the man-hours that I've got in public works. So not, not just the eleven percent cut, but losing roughly half my workforce in public works is, is tragic.
As far as getting the word out, can we use the blackboard to notify the people? Do we, don't we have the ability to, like, draw a circle from a radius and it contact all of those people in those areas?
Uh, yes, we could.
And just tell them their park, whichever park it is in their neighborhood, maybe, you know, what's going on with it, and that, see if anybody wants to volunteer, get a group together?
Yeah, do you recall how many we've got on the Blackboard Connect now, signed up? It's not as many as we hoped, I know that. Twenty-three hundred? Yeah, we can put it out there on that.
And do we have the ability to put notes in the water, I mean, a note on the water bill that lists these parks? And, I mean, can we highlight it where they'll see it when they get their water bill?
As long as it's not a particularly long message, we care.
Steve, another thing is, is what Stacy, uh, adopts parks, can they get any tax, whether from us on their donation for their time and later, and maybe in the two of us?
I, I'll defer to Brad on that, but I wouldn't see why not, I'm, I'm game for it.
I'll have to check into that, I don't know, um, it sounds reasonable. If we can figure out a way to do it, we can check and see.
I think you have to refer them to their personal tax consultant on that.
Yeah, well, I mean, we can give them a letter, certainly, a, any, for their time, I don't think that's an issue, if they, if we can deduct, I mean, if, yeah. I mean, just have to keep track of it and make sure it's verified somehow, I mean.
Any other questions or comments regarding the parks? We can do anything. I mean, we can table it, we can hold off-
A letter from the Parks Recreation Committee, uh, if you can, not vote tonight, and give opportunity for, uh, organizations to make a step in and adopt, like, uh, Tom said.
And I think that's what, what we're leaning towards, is holding off on putting the parks out for sale and trying to see which of the parks may have someone that is able or willing to mow and agree to mow them, and then kind of take a re-inventory of what's left. If all six parks are gonna be mowed, taken care of, or whatnot, then that eliminates, you know, s- the, the, the burden from us of taking care of it. And so I think-
A letter from the Parks and Recreation Committee, though, would be asking specifically for, uh, organizations to adopt that park, or a family to adopt it, that park, if we keep it from possibly being sold, where they could organize, have the work day every spring, maybe the park cleaned up, uh, plan on mowing, once they clean it, then it's just the mowing of, of the park for the summer. And then you're kind of free for the, uh, of September, in September, October, till the following spring, when it needs to be cleaned again. And there's, I would think of, uh, city organizations, uh-
Church groups.
Church groups, uh, I would say the women's organization, we may get our nails dirty, but, uh, you know, but there are plenty of, um, I would think, organizations that would adopt, and especially some of the very small parks, where maybe they'll take, invite people to be the volunteers.
Sure.
And, and, and as a council, that would be what we, we would love to have that happen. I mean, none of us want to get rid of all parks. It just, as everyone's talked about, it's the budget thing, so if that could happen, that would be great.
And it's definitely not like any significant income is derived from selling the parks either. And so that really is not any deciding force of trying to contemplate selling the parks with any revenue obtained by that. Yes, sir.
Why not do, do the same thing to the parks that aren't on the list? And maybe some of the ones that you're planning on mowing, you won't have to.
Right, some of the problem with the larger parks as well that aren't on the list is they're just, I, I mean, it would be a huge project. But if anybody's willing to do it, oh, absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Well, if you spread it out over all the parks, you may lose some people that would volunteer to cut the ones that are under the sale.
Sure.
Uh, I know if I had a point, and I know everybody, I know you're very, but the number one rule of making a comment is that all economies, uh, are cycle. And that's been a fact forever. And the second rule is that whatever happens today in that company doesn't necessarily matter, but one apple's gonna happen tomorrow. It could go down further, or it could be a better, uh, never know what's gonna be, but most likely, the economy's gonna be better soon.
But you're held fiduciarily responsible for now. And so it may cycle, but the problem is, is it still has to be mowed for five years before it may cycle back.
And really, some of those parks don't have to be mowed as much, maybe as even the city mows. I know Brian Park, uh, third, I would probably drag stuff, you know, around the trees and, and, you know, those weeds seem to just grow in certain areas, so that might be a five, it's mowing it once, it'll be three, that's a lot.
But part of the problem too is you'll have to maintain the certain height, because the city can't have land where they allow grass to grow higher than someone that if you're trying to enforce the tall weeds and grass and allow your parks and everything else to be taller.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I think Brian, I would probably, if you were to do it, you'd be, uh, here.
Yes, ma'am.
I was gonna say that, you know, last summer, summer for us, that there was a church group that came out and, and donated their time in New Orleans, that they connected a little park, so I'm, I'm sure that there's church groups around here that, that you can just get into and connect with the parks.
Sure.
Um, they put up a type of power plant, and of course, there's ripping down stuff that, um, roof gets torn. And they notice things that bother them, and by some of the kids down there, they go back down. And I, there's no trash cans down there, so it's like, I have to go down there with my own truck, be with the truck. But besides that, I mean, like, mowing is the only thing that I think that we all have to get together on, to do. There's a really not much else to do, except for the ones that goes on the tree.
What's the estimated savings, dollar mark, if we don't have to maintain those parks?
Well, it, again, it goes back to the man-hours, and I'm looking at, uh, I'm gonna pack it, I just had it up, and then I scrolled back up, but, it's, it's the man-hours, we're looking at, here we go. Uh, ten, fourteen, seventeen, twenty, twenty-three, crew, uh, so that'd be times three, so sixty-nine man-hours. Per week.
Sixty-nine, I believe.
Plus fuel, plus maintenance on the equipment.
Any other questions or comments?
Did that answer your question? I'm sorry, okay.
We, we, I'm in the heart report, and we do have a park that it's, that it's part, you know, Mr. Harder, um, bought it, bought it in the neighborhood. He did dedicate a, a portion of, of, uh, the, the plaque to the park. Um, but it's not a public park, but it's actually in trust, um, um, with the owners of the surrounding lots, and they're sharing the trust. And each, each resident pays dues each year, with, with proper taxes, um, insurance, and that's like, fresh, and, and, uh, for, um, um, encouraging neighborhoods to, uh, try that, might, might also be a possible ideal to explore. Um, it's what we, we're in the heart report, and we're, and we're, and we pay five dollars a, a year.
But you're also obligated, are you not, as a homeowner in that park, to pay that?
Yes, you are obligated, but it, it would have to be every, every homeowner, in a lot of homes, they, they, they have those, they, they issue the trust.
Any other questions or comments? Steve, is there anything else about the budget we need to take a look at and address?
Uh, there's a whole lot, but if you wanna skip to item seven and, and vote on that, so that these folks can have some peace of mind, uh-
We will move to current business number seven. Consider, the, as listed, it's consideration, possible action to declare a surplus and offer for sale six city parks to reduce staffing requirements for maintaining the parks in view of the loss of inmate staff. The parks recommended by the city staff to be offered for sale are Bryan with a Y, our apologies, Cravens, Bell, Johns Park, Adwan Park, and Guynal.
And I move to table.
A second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hanson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary Hout?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion to table, passes.
And we will work at getting something out to see what we can do as far as getting those mowed. It is not our intention to want to close the parks, sell them, or anything else, because as said earlier, once you get rid of the real estate, it is gone, and you cannot re-acquire it if and hopefully when the economy does turn around. And so we'll be looking at that. Yes, sir.
I'd like to say, Marie Dawson would like to say something, but she hasn't got the chance today.
She was the spokesperson, we noted that.
She has been saving the park, so I just wanted to speak to her.
That's the first time I've seen Marie silent in my whole life.
She's signing now, though.
Yeah, and she has a sign that she can write it for you. Back to the budget, as far as going over the budget.
Before we start, one, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, because this is exactly what we wanna hear, and we want our citizens to become involved, and you guys are key to that, and spreading the message, you guys will be key to that as well. And so, thank you for coming out and sharing your thoughts and, uh, opinions with us, because we don't get that a lot of time, and so we appreciate that.
All right. All right. Uh, we'll go ahead and get into the budget. Uh, as, as most of us have noted through this a couple of different times, we are going to only allocate the revenue numbers that we received in the previous year. That's, that's state law. So, we, this year, we got total revenue, if you look on that front page, of ten million seven fifty-four, six sixty. And then if you turn to the, the, right behind, it's, are they all the same, the green tab?
Yes.
Uh, if you look at the green tab, which is page one on mine, uh, you'll notice in the two thousand seventeen budget, total revenue of two thousand seven hundred and fifty-four, six sixty. So, we're only allocating the revenue that we received in the previous year. So, let's, let's talk about the revenues a little bit. Uh, Jay does a fantastic job, and I, I kinda wanna dwell on that for just a second. Uh, the job that Jay does in making this understandable, at least as much as most humans can, uh, is phenomenal. Uh, the fact that he's got the two thousand fifteen actual, which, that's very easy to track against what our budget is going to be in twenty seventeen. So, in the, i- if you look on that, on page one, behind that green tab, if you look at the two thousand fifteen actual of eleven million five thirty-three, one ninety-four, and you compare it to what we're actually budgeting this year, I think you get a flavor for the total impact to our revenue stream. Is everybody tracking on that?
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, you know, when you're losing eight hundred thousand dollars approximately, we've got to find ways to close that gap. So, I, I would reemphasize that that probably is something that we could have weathered fairly easy. Uh, no, that's the wrong term. Uh, we could have weathered that. Uh, however, with the loss of the manpower, it is something akin to devastation. Uh, our public works is going to be challenged like they've never been challenged before. Likely, it will probably reach your ears from time to time, uh, in the form of complaints about, uh, medians not being kept, uh, the length of time that it takes to repair water or sewer leaks, those sorts of things we're going to see going forward. Uh, now, I wish that were all the bad news. The, the other bad news is that at the same time that we were, we were trying to work through this in our budget planning, uh, we were notified that our health insurance was going up nineteen percent. Well, we've been very, we've had, we've enjoyed the city council's support in providing phenomenal healthcare to our employees. Uh, in most cases, I think all my department heads would agree, that in the end, that is what helps us attract and keep the best. And, uh, we do have phenomenal city workers, we really do, and I, I, I attribute a lot of that to the fact that we do give them fantastic health coverage. To this point, we have provided, uh, family health coverage for essentially free. They pay about sixty dollars a month out of what is going to cost us about fourteen hundred and forty dollars a month. So, uh, we wanted them to contribute a little bit, they have been contributing a little bit, but now, we're to the point in our budget and in our manpower issues that I feel strongly that the council needs to address the healthcare situation. That's about, uh, the only place to cut short of cutting positions. In this budget, you will find that there are four positions to be eliminated. Uh, two are unoccupied, two are occupied, and there will be, uh, some, uh, healthcare reduction in the form of, we want, and we're recommending to the city council, that we continue to cover the, the employee and their children. The spouse under the Affordable Care Act is not a dependent, that is made clear throughout the body. Uh, I've done what I can to educate myself on the, the ACA, and it's, wow, I mean, there's a lot to it, and every time you think you've got a nugget, it leads you on about fourteen other rabbit trails. Um, but the bottom line is that we feel like in order to be able to provide something that's affordable to the city, that we are going to ask the city council to, uh, to just take the employee and their children. If the employee doesn't have children, we'll provide the single coverage as a small fee. Uh, and then if, for whatever reason, the employee has a spouse who is not employed or doesn't have, uh, health coverage offered through their employer, they are allowed to come back on our plan. And Jay, help me with the amount, I've got so many numbers running through my-
Right, the spouse is two hundred and seventy.
Okay. And then if they cover their children on top of that?
Four hundred and seventy.
Four, four seventies, the number, the number I was looking for. So, in effect, an employee that is looking to cover spouse and children will be obligated to pay four hundred and seventy a month, where they were at sixty dollars a month. That's a significant increase in expense to our employees. But frankly, uh, we needed to cut roughly ten percent, and the only way to get there without cutting personnel was to cut healthcare. This is going to save us around two hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year, and that's almost what we were looking at at the sales tax base, so, uh, that's, I'm giving you the thirty thousand foot, we can go page by page, uh, this is stuff that I enjoy, but not everyone does. Uh, we, uh, let's see, any other highlights that, you wanna give them the good news?
Well, I do want to add to that, on that four hundred and seventy, we'll have a number of employees, the Issure, Oklahoma, uh, is active, and it covers households, uh, up to seventy-five thousand dollars. So, we'll have a number of employees that will qualify for that, so they will not be required to kick that.
Jay, do you know how many spouses are affected by this, offhand?
Um, well, when you say, I think we have thirty-three altogether. Thirty-three families that will be affected, right.
No, but many of those have coverage for their spouse that is working elsewhere, but they elect to be on ours because we're cheaper.
Right, we probably have less than ten that actually do not have some other coverage.
They could pick it up with their own employee.
Correct.
Now, the inmates help us in more with more than just mowing in parks, right? I mean, they help us throughout the entire year.
Absolutely. Many of them are on heavy equipment.
Do you guys ever have a chance or maybe thought about it, ran the numbers as far as what we would pay, the difference we would pay if we had to replace those employees, if we had been paying employees, basically, rather than what we pay the inmates, you know, given the, the health insurance we would be providing, the taxes we pay, uh, workers' comp, all of those things, do you guys have any idea what that would roughly equate to in dollars that we were?
I, I ran those numbers once, Chris, and I, I've forgotten, but I think it, yeah, okay.
Five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year is roughly what they saved us by doing that work? So, if we had to put manpower out there to do what they were doing, okay.
That's a lot. So, as, as we go through the budget, uh, still on page one, the appropriations, uh, you can see that from the two thousand sixteen budget column versus the two thousand seventeen budget column, I, I can't see of any of those budget columns where two thousand sixteen is higher than two se- two thousand seventeen, so just about every department has seen some reduction, uh, other than emergency management. Now, when you get down to item, uh, eighty-nine, uh, we did receive a, an extra grant from emergency management, Oklahoma Emergency Management, who has contracted with us, and the reason that we got twenty thousand dollar grant, uh, over and above what we normally get at fifteen thousand, was that we agreed, uh, agreed to allow our murder, emergency management to cover all of Seminole County. Uh, in other words, when they're tracking severe weather that comes through, uh, Seminole County, uh, typically, we have some fairly sophisticated equipment and spotters, and, uh, once it gets to us and it goes by us, we, we could shut it down. Uh, and emergency management, Oklahoma, has, uh, said, you know what, we'll give you an extra twenty thousand dollars if you'll, uh, do this for the rest of the county. So, we, we felt like that was a responsible thing to do for the people in the area, it's not a lot different than we do for ambulance and, and things like that, we cover outside of our city limits. Any questions regarding any of the appropriations that are, um, the, the big-ticket items? Uh, clearly, uh, the police and fire, uh, fire is, is down a little bit. Uh, that'll be specific to healthcare, uh, things that we've advanced. Now, I will be very careful as I tell you that this is a budget to adopt, that we are still in negotiations, there are long processes that we have to go through with our unions in their negotiations, and I won't give anything away that, uh, that happens behind closed doors in those negotiations, because we have ground rules. But I, I can tell you that, uh, that they're aware of our budget situation, and, uh, we'll see how, how things come out on that. But, uh, this budget indicates that there would be no, uh, problems with, uh, signing contracts going forward with both the police union and the fire union. Uh, that may or may not be the case, uh, but I certainly hope it is.
Are there any other questions regarding the budget? And I also wanna remind everybody, this is an open meeting, so if anybody does have any questions or comments, we'll gladly accept those. Any other comments or questions regarding the budget? If I could get a motion to go ahead and close the public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consideration and action of consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary Howk?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience in general for the Seminole City Council meeting? Under resolutions number one, consideration possible action to approve resolution number two thousand and sixteen dash nine, a resolution whereby the city council resolves to submit a vote of the registered voters of the city of Seminole, the question of extending the terms of city council from two years to four years and further providing the form of the ballot to be utilized at the election.
Is this and the other matters under these resolutions coming out of the review of the, uh, uh, city charter?
That's correct.
Charter board.
The next four agenda items are the result of the meetings of the charter committee that had met from time to time, it's a citizens committee. Um, uh, they reviewed the city charter, looked at several items that they thought were necessary to update the city charter. Um, one of the, the first, the first one, of course, is, uh, the proposition to take to the voters to consider extending the term from two years to four years. Uh, the reasoning, that I understand the committee looked at that was because of the, uh, the cost of having an election, uh, you know, more frequently. Uh, you'll notice the second, or excuse me, the third, pardon me, the fourth agenda item is actually the recall provision, so, uh, there is a, uh, procedure that's, that's fairly specific and, uh, clearly identified for recall, should you choose to do this. They did look, I couldn't even begin to tell you, there was a chart that was, uh, that was presented, uh, many, uh, communities that had various terms, uh, of office for city council members and the mayor, uh, many, many, a lot of them were four years, and that was one of the reasons they, um, thought that this would be a good idea. It's a cost-saving measure, but again, um, and it's also a stability, uh, measure, they thought that having, uh, you know, a four-year term would, would, uh, be beneficial, uh, but also to all, to have a provision there as well, uh, for recall of that person. So, uh, those are presented, uh, to you, and the other two are fairly, uh, they're fairly simple, uh, we can, I can address them as we go if you want to. I'd be happy to field any questions. If you wanna know who the committee members were, Perry Robertson, Martin Barrett, Gary Adams, uh, Dolores Jones, um, and then this, uh, I'm trying to think of who else, Neil Craig was also on there. The DeeDee, uh, myself and Sharon were there, just as city staff, so.
In reading this, none, none of the, um, link, the termings could change until the next election.
Yes, there's a, it's a, you'll notice that it, it goes from two to four, but there's also a provision there for a transition period, and I think beginning, and you have to read it, I think, beginning with the next election, it would be for a three-year term-
Yeah.
-until we got it to the even every, every two years.
That's correct.
And a lot, and by the way, the recall, uh, resolution or, or the, the ordinance, or actually the charter, and, uh, and this partic- particular one, uh, I think the city in Norman was kind of the template, uh, for this particular, we took a, a bunch of, uh, city charters and looked, looked at them and looked at how other cities did it, at least the, the charter committee did, but this is very similar to Norman.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
I'll abstain since I was on this charter board.
Gary Howk?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number two, consideration possible action to approve resolution number two thousand and sixteen dash ten, a resolution whereby the city council resolves to submit to a vote of the registered voters of the city of Seminole, the question of removing milk and milk products and adding health and safety and further providing the form of the ballot to be utilized at the election?
You learn something new every time you look at the city charter. Um, always, uh, is entertaining sometimes, but I guess, um, we used to regulate milk and milk products, but we don't do that anymore, so the, uh, committee thought that that would be a good thing to do, and insert the words health and safety to kind of bring it into the modern era, so that's what that was about.
So, I have a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Roll call on the lack of milk.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
DeeDee Patterson?
Abstain.
Gary Howk?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number three, consideration possible action to approve resolution number two thousand and sixteen dash eleven, a resolution whereby the city council resolves to submit a vote of the registered voters of the city of Seminole, the question of amending the procedure for competitive build, bidding on public improvements and further providing the form of the ballot to be utilized at the election.
Yes, this is a, uh, an update, a recommendation from the citizen committee regarding section seven six of the city charter. This is so archaic, it's, it's actually an obstacle to the efficiency of our, of our, of our city government, but it basically provides competitive bids at three thousand dollars or higher, and as everybody knows, the state law, I think, is up to fifty thousand now or something, but- But, we're, we're, we'd like to get that consistent with state law. And actually, the resolution itself is going to allow the City Council to set that particular amount. So, if you did not want to do the full amount that's consistent with state law and you wanted to lower it, you could do that as well. So, the three thousand dollars is, is, it's costly and way out of date. So, we recommend that you pay, at least submit this to the voters.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Abstain.
Gary Howke?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number four, Consideration Possible Action to Approve Resolution Two Thousand and Sixteen dash twelve, a resolution whereby the City Council resolves to submit to a vote of the registered voters of the City of Seminole, the question of setting forth the procedure for removal of elected officials by recall petition and further providing the ballot of the form, excuse me, the form of the ballot to be utilized at the election.
This comes from Article Ten of our City Charter, Section Ten dash two. We already have a provision in place for recall. This simplifies it. Again, it was kind of based upon the city of Norman. One of the things that this does, it clarifies a particular procedure for recall. So, just to summarize, on a recall petition, anybody that would choose to do that, would go to the city clerk's office, register, or, or basically say, I want to, we're going to do this. Their time period starts, I believe, the day after. They have to bring that back with the requisite number of signatures. It's by ward, of course. And then, the city clerk has thirty days to validate those signatures to make sure that they're qualified electors of that particular ward. After that, if the, if the city clerk validates those signatures, then the mayor's required to set a, a date or, or propose a resolution for recall or set a recall election. So, it's very clear, very specific, and I think it's probably an improvement to what we have now. Not a whole lot of difference, it's just a clear picture.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Abstain.
Gary Howke?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have one question in retrospect.
Yes.
Can a councilman initiate that on himself?
You might want to after this budget proposal.
Yeah.
Under addendum for a, Consideration Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number Two Thousand and Sixteen dash thirteen, a resolution whereby the City Council resolves to submit to a vote of the registered voters of the City of Seminole, the question of extending the terms of mayor from two years to four years and further providing the form of the ballot to be utilized at the election.
Same thing, just for the mayor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Abstain.
Gary Howke?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin? Motion passes.
Number five, Consideration Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number Two Thousand and Sixteen dash fourteen, a joint budget resolution approving the fiscal year Two Thousand and Sixteen dash Two Thousand and Seventeen, consolidated budget that includes all funds and authorities of the City of Seminole.
And I can have a vote.
Was that a motion?
Steve, you praised Jay, I'm going to praise him a little bit more. He always comes up with the figures that we ask for. I know there's a lot of time put in on this budget. Both you and Steve, we appreciate what you do. But we always have the answer for us, and you've never been wrong yet. Hopefully, you're not any longer.
No pressure.
Therefore, I move that we approve.
Is there anything we need to put in this based on ongoing negotiations? Or you'll come back to us if this needs to be?
Yeah, what, what will happen is, you'll be presented with a contract. And whether or not that contract is content, can, consistent with the budget that you passed, we'll either, we'll either decide to approve the contract and do a budget amendment if it's different. So, there are provisions to get it in line.
I'd like to also thank our department heads, because y'all contributed a lot on trying to come up with numbers. I mean, to help with the budget to give to Jay, so thank you very much.
My second.
Very same.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary Howke?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor's out of the office, so we'll continue with current business until he returns. Item number six, Consideration Possible Action to Approve the Transfer of One Hundred and Forty-Nine Thousand Six Hundred Dollars from the Series Two Thousand and Six for Revenue Bonds Economic Development, with a current balance of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, for the first payment of the Seminole Economic Development Council for restructure, reconstruction by Coke Roofing of the Harvey Road Warehouse Roof.
Yes, sir. The Seminole Economic Development Council operates the, what we call the Harvey Road Building next to the Police Department. For several years, we've leased the portion of the building to Gordon Cooper and a portion of the building we leased to Wrangler for storage of their, their extra jeans. So, this year, we had a significant failure in the roof. It was leaking on, on some pallets of jeans. And the S E D C decided to fix the roof. And certainly, the proceeds of that bond allow for economic development to, things such as fixing job-producing properties such as that. So, we've asked the City Council to provide a request to our trustee in the form of a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar reimbursement. Hundred and forty-nine thousand six hundred dollars, to be exact.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Brad, I guess we have to abstain on these too, do we not? Since we're only.
Because you're on S E D C?
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't think so. I don't think there's a, but if you want to, I don't think it's going to make any difference, but.
I vote yes.
I don't, I don't think there's a conflict.
Okay. Gary Howke?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We've already covered number seven, number eight, Consideration Possible Action to Approve the Lease Agreement with Seminole Public Schools for the Lease of Field Number Three and the Concession Number Two at the Seminole Softball Complex from Two Thousand and Sixteen through Two Thousand and Seventeen.
Move to approve.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary Howke?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number nine, Consideration Possible Action to Approve the Lease Agreement with Seminole Public Schools for the Lease of Fields Number One, Two, and Four and Concession Number One at the Seminole Softball Complex from July first, Two Thousand and Sixteen, through June thirtieth, Two Thousand and Seventeen.
Should that be the softball association?
That's not, yeah.
Yeah, that shouldn't be Seminole Public Schools, that should be Seminole Softball Association.
If we can make said changes?
Can we do that? Can we make that change to this?
Yes, you can just ask that it be amended to reflect Seminole Softball Association. And this is the annual lease that we do, so that's just, appears to be a typo in the.
I would move that we amend item eight to comply with proper moment.
Number nine, sir?
I mean, number nine.
That's what I thought you said. Do I, is that a motion then? A second?
I'll shake it.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary Howke?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number ten, Consideration Possible Action to Approve the Lease Agreement with Seminole State College for the Lease of Euler Field from July first, Two Thousand and Sixteen, through June thirtieth, Two Thousand and Seventeen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Anson?
Yes.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary Howke?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Watland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number eleven, Consideration Possible Action to Approve Twelve Additional Stop Signs at various locations throughout municipal park and to lower the speed from twenty to fifteen miles per hour as recommended by the Planning Com- Commission to address speeding within the park.
Would we also flag those sign, those stop signs and stuff, just to make them, you know, how people get used to going a certain direction and they don't look? You know, something just to catch your attention.
That first ticket will get their attention.
I think the best thing.
I'm afraid about the first car wreck, somebody flies through there and.
I think one of the best things we could do out there is vet parking on the street itself. If you go out there when it's crowded, a lot of people are parking along the street line. And it's causing just a one lane to go through. And kids running in behind those cars is what the, our seriousness is.
The problem is, there's not any place for them to park.
Well, there's, there's all kinds of parking lots out there, they just won't walk, you know? They could go up and park at, at the golf course.
Sometimes they're full, I mean, they're sometimes full, so.
Yeah.
I think it depends on, it depends on what activities are going on. I mean, if it's strictly just the tournament.
In, in most cases though, Jeff, there is parking up there. They just park because it's close and they get out.
I agree, it's dangerous, I mean, it's, it is very dangerous.
Well, I think we need to restrict the parking, and put up signs, no parking along the street.
This is one, very, very seldom do I get calls from people. And the approval of that many additional stop signs. I perceive calls very much posed to too many stop signs, saying that the problem is too many people parking on both sides of that road.
Yeah.
And that that is the problem we need to address.
So, what drove, I don't know who, who needs to look at it.
They wrote it, man.
What, what drove, what drove the Commission to?
For several years, well, for several years, the Park Board has had, what they're actually proposed from the Park Board was that speed bumps be strewn throughout the park area. And then, once it got to the Planning Commission, they kind of doctored that up and said, no, we don't want speed bumps. I've got a spoiler on my car. What I want is some stop signs.
Twelve stop signs.
There's quite a few stop signs.
I didn't know there was that many intersections there.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of stop signs.
Three in a row.
Yeah.
Stop, stop, stop.
And, and it even goes down, really, what I consider outside the park to the corner of Main and Wilson there.
Although, as people pay less attention, I've had a few close calls, there are people thinking that they have the right of way from.
Now, I, yeah, I could definitely see that being made a three-way stop. Because there's so, I mean, if you aren't watching, person who has that yield signs, they're just so used to people not coming, that you just.
Is this something that y'all might want to table and actually look and vote on, like, intersections and signs independently?
I would so move to take, find out where they're going to put them.
Basically, what we're going to move is table this for looking at, instead of a lump sum that says, throw twelve stop signs in there? I don't think, any of us disagree that we could use a few stop signs, but not twelve.
They could show us where they want to put the stop signs, I think that would.
Ouch. Let, let it fall, Steve. Can we beat it for one month?
We're in the middle of, you know, baseball season.
Do you know where all they were wanting to put them?
Yes, and, and I agree that, that is a waste of many stop signs, but I believe it can be, you know, maybe half that many.
Well, Mike, why, why don't we come back with the actual position of those stop signs?
Well, it's in, if you got your iPad, it's, it's in your.
I know, but the ones that you recommend.
Oh.
Are they one of you?
Yeah, I mean, the whole deal is this, if you want.
You're saying it's been a problem.
Something is that, I glanced through all that stuff, but I didn't see that. It's what, it's in the, I'm in the wrong file. Let me find that picture.
Anyway, we have a motion to table.
We're going to table that in about a second. All in favor?
I'm just, I would like to hear Mike a little bit more. Apparently, they're wanting to get this taken care of for good, because it's been going on, so. I mean, can, can we look at the maps and try to?
Has, has requested it.
I missed the map, where's that map at?
It's on page forty-six of fifty-seven on your iPad.
I mean, maybe we can iron this out.
How?
I'm not sure, are we allowed?
How tall does the speed above have to be before it damages a car?
Well, one of these stop signs is already there, for instance, two of them are on Keith Marshall.
Are we allowed, though, to completely change the way that it is in here as far as voting on individual stop signs or speed bumps?
Well, I repeat, if we get those, those cars from parking on the streets.
Are we allowed to vary from the agenda to address each individual stop sign?
Coming in and out of the ballpark.
Yeah, or is it more of, we need to table this if we're going to talk about each individual stop sign?
I think you could discuss it under the agenda item that I.
Couldn't pass it, could we?
I think that's where Mike was going to say the city manager's discretion. If you guys say, look, it's okay to go up here on Keith Marshall, give us two stop signs, but, but to do the two coming out of the parking area, I don't know how many of you have got it pulled up, but if you're coming out of the parking area near the concession stand, nobody's going to see those stop signs anyway. So, maybe the two stop signs, I don't think I'd make it a three-way, but two stop signs there for a walkway between the T-ball fields and the baseball fields. And I would probably give them two up there at Keith Marshall. And frankly, I'll probably get in trouble for saying this, but this, this has more to do on the Keith Marshall lane. It has more to do with college traffic than anything. They, from time to time, they will scream through there. I know we've stopped them a lot.
There are stop signs at both ends of that, though, is there?
Yeah, and the Grissow ones, I'm fine with that.
In other words, when you come down Grissow, you're going to have to stop.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I see people fly through that street, through Grissow especially.
I have been up to, seen folks, you know, before people appear up to those.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, on some of those, my question too is, do you usually put a stop sign on a parking lot? When you're pulling out of a parking lot?
Is there one coming out of the softball complex? I think maybe that's where they're going to be getting, I think maybe there is one there.
There's one coming out of the baseball fields on both sides of the parking lot.
If it's all private property, it's not enforceable.
Right.
You could put a, you could put a, a, a stop sign on a private parking lot, it's not enforceable.
Oh, it isn't my house.
This isn't private, this is public.
Do you want to amend your motion at the, to table it? Or do you want to pass it with the city manager's discretion?
I think that's, I don't.
That's up to.
I mean, I only really see one, I mean, other than coming out of the parking lots, whether, you know, I only see the one in the middle there that really, I, I don't think it would.
Can you?
I mean, I, I, I think the ones on, on Grissow, I think we need those. I, I've thought forever that we should make that three-way a stop.
Yeah.
And, uh, the stops coming out of the, in and out of the par, I don't know, maybe it's just a, I think people eventually get to where they don't see those coming in and out of the parks, they don't ignore them.
So, you really see nine?
If they're observing the stops.
Nine stops, like, point nine, and two are already there.
Three have been grabbed mainly, mainly those.
Three, six, nine.
What were, what were the discussions from the, the, I guess, the Planning Commission on wanting to put all of those there? I mean, because, I mean, I would assume they put some more study into it than we have right here.
One of the concerns about the speed bumps was if it affects buses, if there was more speeding and it's going to air slow down, uh, buses, and things like that, it's having effect on.
Well, I myself would like to, I mean, I could see stop sign, I know we can't change this, but I would mind the stop signs there, but then when you get to that street going around the park where it gets tight when people are parking, maybe put one or two speed bumps just through there. I mean, rather than have a stop sign on the street there.
So, so if you take away the two that are already there? So, if you take away the two that are already there and the three out of the parking lots, which is kind of what...
Yeah, I wouldn't put one there.
I think I kind of, I mean, I kind of got it. That's what we're talking about. We don't really have a problem at all in the intersection. It's really, you're not gonna have it through the parking lots and, uh...
What's the purpose of slowing down and having the stop sign heading south on Grissow? It's a straight shot.
South of Grissow, didn't they make the turn?
Yeah.
Make the turn by Boon Town.
Well, yeah, right when you get just past Boon Town and you're going down and, during towards, I mean, that's a straight shot with really nothing to play, I mean, what do you...
But if they make, if they turn the corner and go up...
If they turn the corner or go on another, yeah, either way they're going. I, I drive that road a lot, instead of going down Ninety-Nine and people drive really... They, they drive too fast on that road.
But, I mean, my question, though, is this, does a stop sign stop that, or does enforcement stop that?
Mr. Marshall?
Well, I, I mean, truly, from the standpoint of, you can have forty stop signs there, but if the concern is people are speeding, they're still speeding, that... I mean, that's the only thing I'm looking at. I'm just not a big fan of twenty stop signs in one block.
Well, I think it's just because that's an area with a lot of children and we can't patrol it twenty-four-seven.
My question is, is, I mean, instead of stop signs, could we revisit the, I'm kind of a fan of the speed bump.
Speed bump. I'm not, I'm for those, too, but the Planning Commission wasn't, so...
I technically have had a motion in a second. Do you want to amend your motion, or you're sticking with it?
No, I, I think we need to sit down and look at this in detail.
I have a motion to table this with a second. All those in favor of tabling this, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Can we get a roll call, please, Jay? You knew it was only two of y'all.
Chris Hansen?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary Howke?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
No.
Motion passes. Motion to table passes. That hardly ever happens, though. I mean, we barely have...
Chance to make some air bowl, I guess.
Man, we're closed.
So, with that, I think the things that were brought up, though, was looking at no parking along the side, which was...
I think no parking signs along that street would help.
Just make sure the Planning Commission that worked on this knows who, who voted to table it, okay?
Number twelve, consideration possible action to approve the aggregate deductible workers' compensation plan with O-MAG at an annual premium amount of one hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The city has re-qualified for the rebate program based on claims history for the past few years and can participate by choosing the aggregate plan over the standard plan at the same premium rate. Do I have a motion?
How much are we gonna get back, Jay?
Well, initially, nothing.
But we qualify.
But we qualify, that's right.
Like I told you, he's truthful.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Roll call, please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
Dee Dee Patterson?
Yes.
Gary Howke?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Bill Wantland?
Yes.
Jeff Griffin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Under reports, Mayor, unfortunately, a couple of our school board members have already left, and I wish they would have been here. But, once again, we had a wonderful dance ensemble down at Conawal this year. I heard a lot of moaning and that about the fact that here we are with all that is going on in Seminole, that we are driving to Conawal to be at the recital. It seems to me, I wish that we could have such a deal with our school here, and I'm a little upset that the initial school proposal does not include an auditorium. And so, this is now the second year in a row that we have had the dance recital in Conawal, unfortunately. City Attorney.
I just want to echo what everybody said about our Charter Committee and the volunteers we have. I'll tell you, the Charter Committee worked really hard, educated themselves on the charter, looked at the law, really engaged. Lot of, just some really neat observations and discussion, and they really put a lot of time into the recommendations. I also believe, and I know we didn't get it on the agenda, but I think that there was a recommendation about maybe even looking at some redistricting? Is that right?
Right.
Based upon our population shift, so we, that will probably be something you'll look at in the future. But they were really, really fine people to work with and very disinterested parties that the mayor chose. I think we had to go through a few of them to get them to volunteer, but it was a good, good group of people. That's all I have.
City Manager.
Yes, I want to applaud the efforts of the City Council. Anytime we get in a budget situation like we got, the way that you all stuck with it and worked through the work sessions to get something that could get us to this point, it's really a testament to your fortitude and we appreciate the way that you stayed hooked up with us. Again, I want to pat Jay on the back. We couldn't do everything that we do without Jay. My department heads have swallowed some bitter pills through the years. This one's gonna be a pretty tough one for them. But I do have complete confidence in everything that our city employees are doing. They're just a good group, top to bottom. We're, we're solid and we'll weather this storm. I do agree that it is a cycle and we'll come out of it on the right side. But right now, we're a little hurt, banged up, whatever you want to say, but we will come out on the right side. I want to give a special thank you to John and Jennifer Kramer. John has volunteered to be on our City Council for a long time, but probably what most of us, most of you, don't know is that he spends about forty hours a week at the baseball field, preparing it on a volunteer basis for young children to play when he has no children playing. And it's just a fantastic testament to him. And then, two years ago, I guess, I called his wife while he was at work and I asked her if she would be the softball association's czar because someone had left. And she agreed to take on the softball association. So, during softball, baseball season, John and Jennifer don't speak. They don't even see each other because Jennifer is up there spending about forty hours a week on the softball complex. Good people, and we could not provide what we provide to our young children, both girls and boys, if it weren't for those two. So, I really want to thank them, echo what he said on the Charter Review Committee. That's some pretty tedious work. I mean, that's light reading. When you take that charter home and, and all the law that goes with it, it'll put you to sleep pretty fast, most people. But they did a great job and they stayed with it and got something that can be put before the voters or in front of the council, and they did a nice job. I want to take a minute and, and tell Amy that I appreciate what you guys do on the Fourth of July and I want to invite everyone out to the annual Fourth of July Festival coming up. It's always a huge deal and it's gonna be a lot of fun. And do we have a band yet? Four bands. Who are they?
Abby Nance is one of them, a local, so everybody knows her. She'll be open at Wisnet, there's one, Cold Creek Country or Cold County Creek or something like that, so, I never forget.
Okay.
All great, so, and then, of course, Fireworks again, so...
All right.
Kind of start at four.
Three dogs, no, three.
All right. That's all I have, Mayor.
The, the one thing I want to add to in here, especially address Ms. Bryant and all the others that came this evening, I, we do appreciate y'all coming. We are a board that listens, and so, it is nice sometimes to hear the history because not all of us know the history of some of these parks. And just to let you know, I do hope it works out, especially, I know in Bryant Park, I've actually talked to a couple of people that live around there, and I know they sincerely are, are willing to mow and keep it. And so, but thank you very much for coming.
I've got one other thing, Mayor. I just got reminded. On June twenty-eighth, we're going to have a housing fair at the Wellness Center. The USDA was in town today and they brought several people with them. They've got some, what I consider tremendous opportunities. We saw some pictures of new homes that people that were renting helped build themselves, and the USDA is providing loans and then forgiving a part of that loan for the, for the hours, the man-hours, that the person and their church or youth group or whatever helps provide to working on that house. And it's a fantastic program. In addition, we'll have some other housing programs available at that, that housing fair, but it'll be a neat deal for everyone, especially if you've got renters that you know, that you want to educate on how to become a homeowner. We're gonna have some specialists there that can talk to them.
Word one, Bill Wantland.
I know it's a broken record, but I want to say it again, that we are very appreciative of the entire staff of this city for all the work done. Jay, you deserve the accolades you've received, but everyone else in all the other departments likewise. We are very blessed and I am very appreciative.
Word one, Larry Church.
Have anything that I can add to it, except when I first moved here, I thought I was going back to a small town in Oklahoma. And it turns out that this is actually more like a city in a small town. There's a lot of nice things here. I'm glad to be here, glad to be a part of it. People that's been here doing this all this time is the reason, like, something I always wanted to do. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Word two, Gary Howke.
As Bill says, our staff is, we have an excellent staff, very excellent. Our workers are, you know, they're asking, we're asking them now to step on up again, and I have no doubt that they will. Our citizens, without you, there would be no softball field, there would be no rental center, there would be, all the stuff you talked about, we would not have without you because the bonds that you've chosen to vote for have built those things and supported the citizens in the city. So, thank you very much and we appreciate it.
Word three, Jeff Griffin.
Yep, I agree. Thank you very much for really what everyone else has said. But, you know, we are asking the citizens, if they're interested in saving their local parks, to please step up and volunteer. I know that's something different, but, you know, we want to be able to keep these and we need your support, so please get together and, and let us know.
Word three, Tim Poplin.
I just agree with what Jeff just said, you know? My grandpa always asked me if I was a talker or a doer, and I try to be a doer, and I hope some of these people that want to adopt these parks get on the bandwagon and, and contact some people and we'll just keep them open and do the best we can. Thanks for all the number crunching that you guys have done. I know it's been a lot of hours of doing it. We've always been behind all our department staff heads and, you know, when the money's there, we do everything we can for you guys and, and I know you understand the circumstances, but it'll be back and we'll all get back on the train again, so, thanks.
Word four, Chris Hansen.
Well, in addition to thanking all those who helped get the budget ready and everybody else, I also want to thank all of the people who serve on every committee. We talked about the Charter Committee, but we have a lot of people behind the scenes who work to get it to the point it is before we even get to it and keep us from having to, you know, sit through all of them. And, you know, I'd just like to add also to all the people who came and spoke to us about the parks. I do appreciate that, too, because coming into this meeting tonight, knowing the budget situation, if nobody had been here to talk about it, it very well could have gone con differently than it did. Thank you.
Word four, Dee Dee Patterson.
There are things being said, but bypass. No, I'd like to thank, again, Jay and Steve for all the work on this budget, 'cause I'll tell you, it, people that don't know, it's very difficult, and especially when you're working with a short number, and we appreciate you guys. As well as these section heads which come in and they cut back and cut back well and helped us out on that, and we appreciate it. They're just a good group to work with and we're proud of them.
I have no executive session. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?